Good morning and welcome to this regular session of the Grant County Commissioners. I'll call the recess, the meeting to order, the recess is concluded. We'll start with the prayer led by Mr. Polling and the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Stewart, if you would stand.
Lord Jesus, bless us this day, guide us in the county business, protect America. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to the approval of claims. We have claims dated 6/23/25. Preapproval was given 6/23/25. The general was $155,318.66. Other, $394,121.57. Highway, $1,856.06. Do we? You want a motion?
Sure.
Is there a motion to approve the claims dated 6/23/25?
I'll make a motion when we approve claims dated 6/23/2025.
I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling, to approve claims dated 6/23/25. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have claims dated 6/30/2025. General fund, $152,192.70. Other, $114,698.87. The highway, $22,289.62. A grand total of $289,181.19. Is there a motion to approve claims dated 6/30/2025?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling, to approve claims dated 6/30/2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. We have, again, claims dated, checks dated 7/7/2025. General, $257,356.88. Other, $103,496.61. Highway, $3,891.12. A total of $364,744.61. Is there a motion to approve dated 7/7/25?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling, to approve checks dated 7/7/2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm going to add a preapproved claim dated today, 7/7. The preapproved amount is $48,610. It'll be paid to the Kelly Automotive Group for the purchase of a truck within CCD Fund. If there's no questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling, to preapprove a claim dated 7/7 in the amount of $48,610 to the Kelly Automotive Group. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to payroll number 13. Preapproval was given 6/17/2025. The pay date was 6/20/25. The gross amount was $699,497.48. Is there a motion to approve the payroll number 13?
I'll make a motion to approve payroll number 13.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling, to approve payroll number 13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have payroll number 14. Preapproval was given 7/1/2025. The pay date was 7/3/2025. The gross amount was $696,308.8. Is there any questions? If not, I entertain a motion for payroll number 14.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling, to approve payroll number 14. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. I believe that concludes the payroll and the claims. We'll move on to item number six, communications and board updates from elected officials, boards, or special committees.
Just to bring the update, I'm Kami. Rhonda wanted me to update you guys. We rolled to the auditor on June 26th with our real estate. Out of all of the appeals that we had, 297 of them settled outside of Grant County. That's less than 1% that we have in parcels. We have a 78 commercial going to Peta Bola and 82 real estate going to Peta Bola. And then we just sent out 113s for personal property this morning to get a lot of those returns back so we can get those processed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Bookout with Augusta Consulting. It's a pleasure to see all three of you today.
Good morning.
I've worked hard to keep all three of you up to date on what we're doing and progress we've made. We've completed our official first 90 days of engagement with you guys. We're thankful of that. We've made some progress. I just wanted to hit a few highlight points today just to keep you and the public kind of to know of what's going on. So one of those today is the first Grant County Redevelopment Commission meeting, which will take place at noon today. So thank you to your attorney, Mr. Harker, for assisting in that process, helping that setup. So we're excited about that. We will be working on a press release after that meeting today. I'll share with all of you that we'll go out later on, probably this week sometime. We've worked on the former Dana site. We've done a lot of research and done some outreach to some parties to kind of gauge interest, to see who would be interested, if at all. We have had three different entities that have said, hey, yes, we are interested in that site if there was a clear path forward or we didn't have to come up with a million dollars to pay the back taxes. So we do have options there, working in cooperation with the Redevelopment Commission to do something at that site. It's also important to note that I did have a meeting with the city's economic development director, and they are also very interested in seeing something happen at that site as well. So that's the former Dana site. Select USA, we had a great showing of Select USA for you. We met with over 30 companies. We're still in talks with at least eight of those companies now. One of the big decision keys for those companies right now is the Trump tariff situation. As you all know, that's an ongoing negotiation process. If you're following that at all in the news, you know that August 1st is the deadline for Trump and his tariffs. So a lot of the companies that we met with are kind of waiting to see the outcome of that, but we are still engaged in talks with all of them at this time. We've been in touch with another confidential prospect that I've spoke with you all confidentially under an NDA at this time. We do also have an Italian company that has expressed interest in having a distribution location in Grant County, so that is ongoing as well. Specifically, I had some conversations with you on that topic. Also met with a company that's interested in building a spec building in Grant County. So it'd be nice to have some product to show, something new, something, you know, maybe on the interstate that we could show. Bless you. So we are working on that as well. Lastly, my recommendation, which I've talked to President Middlesworth about, is starting to engage in some what we call BRNE work. This is business retention and expansion work. So whenever you start doing some research on companies who are in the unincorporated areas of the county and working on doing some outreach phone calls to those companies on your behalf to basically say, hey, thank you for operating in Grant County. We're glad you're here. Second, how's business? How are things going? What do you need? Do you need assistance? So we'll be working on that in the coming weeks. Happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate all you've done up to this point, for sure. And like you said in your opening line, it's going to make history today.
Yes.
You know, the first time we've ever had a RBC in this county.
That's a big deal. Yeah, so congratulations, guys. So thanks again.
Thank you. Thanks, Brad. Any other elected officials, boards, or special committee updates? Now we'll move on to item number seven, the EMA report.
Good morning.
Morning.
A couple of things we're looking at. Actually had a relatively quiet holiday weekend, so that was, that's good. But we are watching the horrible events that took place in Texas over the weekend and that loss of life is just horrible. But that, we always look at that and wonder what if in Grant County. So we had a conversation with Director Hicks this morning. We have a pretty robust way to alert people in Grant County. The trouble is, do people get that, pardon the hearing, do they react to that? So we're going to dig in and we'll watch the after action reports out of Texas, see what we can learn from that. There are vulnerable areas in Grant County that we'll address. Probably this week we'll reach out to some folks, just in the event that anything that close to that magnitude happened in Grant County, which is a possibility. So we'll look for that and keep you informed. Questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item number eight, the Central Dispatching Board. Mr. Hicks.
Good morning. So we are still at our 15 full-time dispatchers with six part-time dispatchers. On the 3rd of July, we did interview six prospective employees. Four of those are moving on to the sit-in phase of the hiring process. And then after that, we'll determine if they move on to the testing or if we're done. So hopefully, within the next week or so, we'll have answers on those. We do have a staff meeting coming up on July 8th and 10th, so we can share information with our staff, things that are coming, and kind of have a question-answer type session with them. And then July the 14th through the 16th, I will be hosting a emergency medical dispatch class for my new hires. They are required to have an EMD certification to work in dispatch because we dispatch ambulance. And then lastly, July the 28th through August the 1st, I will be traveling to Franklin, Johnson County, for a center management certification class. That is a week-long class. That is 20 hours lecture, 20 hours hands-on. So I will be out of town for that week. Any questions?
How many, you said you have four people that you interviewed that are in the sitting or they?
So I have three open positions.
Three open positions. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number nine, the IT report. I don't see.
He mentioned to me that he had nothing today.
Okay, he has nothing. We'll move on to item number 10, the Highway Department Report.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. First thing I was going to bring up today is I have a supplement agreement with United Consulting Firm. They're the company that's doing our bridge inspection. In the last couple months, the state, Jeff, you want to come up here and kind of update them on, the state has put more guidelines on doing the inspection, and I'll kind of let Jeff explain what they're doing, what the changes are.
Good morning.
Morning.
Jeff Larison, United Consulting. This is actually pushed down from the Federal Highway Administration, and it's not only across Indiana, but across the country. And all 92 counties are now faced with this supplement. The highway, federal highway down through NDOT has asked all the counties and the consultants that perform the bridge inventories to do a deeper dive into the details of the inspections of each individual bridge. And along with that, they're, they're taking, we're taking the data that's being collected and now breaking it down into further elements, I guess, when we put it, and reporting those. And so the data entry is grown dramatically. And that's primarily what's driving the supplement that David has. If there is good news, the good news is that 80% of the supplement is covered by the Federal Highway Administration or NDOT, and 20% would then be covered by the LPAs. And again, all 92 counties are in the same boat. Unfortunately, it's not a fun thing for consultants to have to do, but they've asked the inspection criteria to be expanded dramatically, which forces us into this.
So I did submit the supplement to NDOT for review last week, and they did get back with me. The supplement, the changes would be total of $55,608. Our 20% would be $11,001.22. So we'd actually have to pay, of course, we'll have to pay it all in the beginning. So.
What was that first number?
And that'll be added to the, where you're playing. So I have a supplement if you guys would like to sign off, and then I'll have United sign off, then I have to send it back to the state for review to make sure everything's still right.
You got to sign, I guess.
Yeah, they'll say, like, third or fourth page, it has a.
Mr. Conner, or Mr. Harker, should we have a motion to approve, signature of that, pending your review?
I was going to say, does he need to review any of the?
I would assume he should review that.
It's the, it's all on the NDOT boilerplate language contract that they have, and you're welcome to review that. It's all been reviewed and approved by NDOT, including the B. They set the, kind of set the bar on what consultant's in charge, so you don't mind your funds.
Do you feel like as the consultant, that the extra in-depth scope of inspecting the bridge will be worth it to us, or?
One camera here. Official answer is yes. But it is a lot of extra work that, I don't know, it just seems that. Seems a product you've been getting in the past that's sufficient.
I'll leave it there. Okay.
This is a mandate.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the supplemental agreement number one with United Consulting with the changes noted, which would be the $55,608 and an auto portion of
So moved.
I'll second. I have a motion from Commissioner Polling, a second from Commissioner Stewart, to approve the supplement agreement number one with United Consulting. As presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Working on some more paving projects, and I wasn't able to get you a list, but I'll try to get that before next meeting. We had a culvert pipe failure out on the east side of Fairmount on 950. I ordered a pipe last week. It should be delivered this Wednesday. I would like to maybe even work Friday if we can get it back installed and get that road open back up. That's a main artery act from Ballerton to Fairmount. So if there is any way we can get it opened back up this week, we will work on Friday to get it done, kind of thing. So working on that. I kind of brought up the Beth a few weeks ago. One thing that the state has been really pushing, even on the bridge inspection and all the community crossing grants, is that we have to make sure our ADA is updated and our Title VI is all updated. Some things they've done a little different on the ADA is, American Disability Act is making sure that people can review that stuff online, whether they can not be able to see or nothing like that. So we have to make sure that our website is available, different things like that. And then the Title VI, just making sure that we, you know, compliance with that on hiring through the whole county. So I believe the deadline to have all that submitted to the state is October 1st of this year, but the sooner the better, I would say. So make sure we get that updated. And just to update you a little bit on the community crossing grants, I don't know if there's going to be another call this year. It's kind of real vague. They're going to change some new rules for next year, kind of thing. One thing is you have to have a wheel tax, which we do, but if you don't, you're not even able to apply for that money. So I'm glad we got that already taken care of. So these are new rules that will be coming out. The other only, other thing is I, do you know where we stand on the stop sign ordinance for 300 West and 200 South?
I would assume that's still on the list for the attorneys to work on.
Yeah.
The stop sign ordinance, we're still working on it.
Okay.
So that was on my, that was my question to ask you.
Okay. I didn't want to forget about it, so as soon as we get it passed, then we'll get everything posted.
That's 300 West, 200 South.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you getting out there, Lambert and Williams.
Oh, yes.
Taking care of that, yeah. Big difference.
Yeah, we have been cleaning up quite a few trees still from last couple of weeks. We've had some storms that's knocked some big trees down, so we're getting them still cleaned up. That's all I have, unless you gentlemen have any.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have nothing in our old business. We'll move on to new business. I'm going to add two items. Item number three, Van Beer and Popcorn Festival, a road closure. And then item number four, county attorney appointment. We'll start with the first item in our new business. Item number one, contract approval for engagement letters for the appraisal of 101 East Third Street. I'll turn this over to Mr. Harker.
We proceed to proposals in response to requests for appraisals on the 101 East Third Street Building. Those are ready, statute and, sorry, the contract, proposals fit in the statute and I would note that those are ready for, to be approved.
So we too have two contracts, one with American United Appraisal Company Inc., and the other with Metz and Denny LLC. We just need to formally have a motion to accept them.
Correct.
So moved.
I'll second. I have a motion from Commissioner Polling, a second from Commissioner Stewart, to accept American United Appraisal Company engagement letter for proposal, as well as Metz and Denny LLC appraisal request for the commercial property at the 101 East Third Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So what's the next step in the procedure, Mr. Harker?
We will send those off to respective appraisers. I suspect they'll have things down to the 30 days, and then the body will meet and decide if it's in best interest to acquire that. I'm not sure. I believe there's an additional preparation possibly required when we do this, so we have to go back, I think, to the county council for approval.
Are there any other questions or comments? We did vote, right? We'll move on to item number two in our new business, community corrections, community corrections grant. Chris Cunningham?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You saw me limping up here today, but you know, you've heard the saying, you know, I fought the law and the law won, and I fought the yard and the yard won. So stepped in a hole and twisted my ankle, so. Anyway, I wanted to bring your attention and ask for your approval for the community corrections As most of you know, the Indiana Legislature cut funding based on the budget forecast, and in April, they cut $10 million from the community corrections grant funding. So from $75 to $65 million. Consequently, they have done anywhere from 9% to 12% cuts across the, each county across the state. So we've had to make adjustments then based upon those cuts and the recommendations from the state community corrections. So what you see before you are the recommendations from there. In addition to those cuts, they eliminated funding across the board for three different program components, jail treatment, which affects us at about $38,500. And then they cut pretrial, but that pretrial funding is just DOC funding, so there still should be money coming in from the Office of Court Services for pretrial for us. That's where our funding comes from. And then prosecutor diversion, which we don't have funding for that. So, but they cut those three areas. Some counties were hit because of those cuts a lot more dramatically than what, what we were. So we had to go back in, our grants committee met, and reviewed the budget, put together a new process because we want to get it to Angie so she's ready for budget hearings. So the two sections that received cuts, the general community corrections grant, and the total budget for that is $917, $961, and that was a cut of $88,000, roughly $88,000. And then our reentry court and court recidivism reduction program, that was $232,787 is our new budget, and that's a cut of $33,000. We were able to, because when we do the budget, we have to estimate what the salaries are going to be based upon the salary schedule, probation officer salary schedule. So since we, after that had happened, we got the, we were able to change some of the budget items, so that helped us within the budget to be able to make it more uniform. So I'm here for you today to ask for requests for approval of the total budget of $1,150,748 and to authorize Angie to then sign the contract for that when it comes in. And that's what we've, I think that's what it states in our letter that we received for funding. Answer any questions you have. I'm giving you a thumbnail sketch of a whole lot of things that happened, but anything I can answer, I'll do my best.
Are there any questions regarding this request?
You might have already answered this, and I apologize if you, if you did, but what did you previously get for jail treatment?
$38,500 is what we received for that.
What did you lose in community corrections?
So we eliminated a position, Chuck, from that. We had a vacant position that we eliminated. And then we moved, we're going to move some money from, it's not, it's not in the budget, but we've taken that out, and we're going to look at, when we do the budget in the fall on the reentry court fee fund, we'll put some money in there.
Yeah, but how much did you lose now they took you down to $917?
Okay, so 88, so the community corrections grants, $88,575 is what we actually lost in total. And the reentry court grant, the exact figure was $33,255. Then we're making up, so our project income that we get from client fees last year was $518,000, and this year for 2026, it'll be $544,63. So it'll go up 22,000. So we were able to make, if we wouldn't have had that vacant position, it would have been very difficult for us. So we were able to make, if we would have had that vacant position, it would have been very difficult for us. We'd have had, we'd have let someone go. God was watching out for us in having that vacant position, or we would have really struggled.
So you don't perceive losing any more positions or cutting any?
Not, not for '26, no, not for '26. We'll see what happens in '27. I know they've talked about, Marty may know about it more, but they've talked about opening up the budget to be able to look at, because the forecast wasn't as severe as what they thought it was going to be at legislative time. So I don't know if that will happen or not, but that's what we're. The Justice Christopher Goff, who chairs J-RAC, said they were on the process of talking with the state about additional dollars that they might have through the courts to be able to support us. But our timeline, we can't, we can't wait to see what they're going to do. And so if that does happen, you know, we may get some extra to be able to help reduce what our commitment's going to be. And just for your benefit, too, about 54% of our budget is all offender fees. So in order for us to keep, you know, the lights on and everything moving appropriately, we need that, you know, we need, we've got to make sure that we have the fees appropriate to be able to, be able to run. So they use, if you want to look it up, it's an administrative code, but they use an obscure funding formula that was developed in the 80s. And they look at your population between, based on the latest census, of 10 to 34-year-olds. They take your total amount of what you have in property value, divide that by that formula, and there's something else that they put into it. But it really makes it difficult for the average person to be able to go in there and look and say, this is how much money we should get. But anyway, anything else I can answer, I'm happy to do that.
Are there any other questions from the members?
Me.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion that we approve. Community Corrections Grant.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling to approve the grants within the General Community Correction Grant as well as the Court Recidivism Reduction Program Reentry Court Grant. And then authorize Angie to sign the contract. Are there any other questions from the members?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Can I make a quick comment, too? I just wanted to thank everyone for the help with our building. Beth helping coordinate, Agent Saul, Chuck out there in the heat, too, with our air conditioning system that we had. So it was a rough couple of days. I've never seen water run down steps based on humidity in a building in my life. And I've been over there since it was built. And so just appreciate the quick response from the maintenance staff trying to make the best of a bad situation, and then you guys allowing us to close. So I know it's appreciated by us to be able to now be in a building where, you know, your sweat's not dripping down your shirt. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. We'll move on to item number three, the Van Buren Popcorn Festival road closure. We received a request from the Van Buren Popcorn Festival, Inc. They just need our signatures to submit to the state in order to close State Road Number 5 from County Road 400 North to County Road 450 North through the town of Van Buren for the duration of the festival. So is there a motion to approve this, authorize two of us to sign this?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Polling, a second from Commissioner Stewart to authorize two of us to sign this letter that will be submitted to the state for the road closure for the Van Buren Popcorn Festival. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to item number four. We're making some changes regarding our legal services. And we're going to appoint or move Mr. Harker to the county attorney and move Mr. Sullivan to the secondary attorney. And in the meantime, we're going to sort out the contract provisions. But I'd like to have a motion to appoint Mr. Harker as the official county attorney and move Mr. Conner to the secondary attorney.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Polling to appoint Mr. Harker as the county attorney and move Mr. Sullivan to the secondary attorney. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I believe that's all the new business I have is, is any of the members have anything else? At this time, we'll open them up to public comment. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we'll allow two minutes. Not seeing anybody move, so we'll be in recess. Have a good week.